I was in a small church And I was the first in charge
That was the first in charge
In the church there were 22 people 22 of them will come to church A small wall shed
It was a small shed
In the shed I had a small room Cardboard like
In front of that shed, a small room of cardboard was put up for me
Then there was a portion of sisters
Behind that shed was for the sisters
Bathroom is not available
There was no bathroom
Water is not available Wind is not available
There was no fence
No toilet
No facilities
No car
No vehicle
25 people will come A month, 400 rupees
And the whole of the month we will get 300 or 400 rupees
Whether you run the church Give support to the faith Give money to the people Give food to all the people and to the faith home
And we should give the tithes and offerings and so on
But God gave me a family A husband and wife A boy and a girl
One son and one daughter
They are two teachers
Both of them were teachers
They got for me First they were going without clutching into my hands I asked them to come to one Bible study They are a member of our church itself in another big church They are a big branch
That branch which they were in was a big branch
The church I was in was a small branch So they hesitated to come there I just asked them to come for one Bible study I caught them
And with one Bible study got hold of them
And they joined me But they had a good spirit of preaching The spirit of gospel When the spirit came after the school was over After four they will go and preach the gospel to the villagers nearby till seven These two children coming from school They will write their home books and will be sitting like that itself After seven thirty they will come back home, cook food and look after them And again in the morning they will get up and go to school But both of them had this gospel The spirit of the Lord is upon me Not to preach the good dealings to the me Today there are 230 people coming to the church And they were the basic for it After some days the boy came to the ministry Next they had a daughter Next they both of them together came to ministry Where are they? See how it will be The spirit of the Lord is upon me
And to the one who is evangelizing The spirit of evangelizing brought them even unto Zion
First his name His name was Samion Firstly we have to understand the meaning of his name Here, Leah was naming his second son The Lord saw that I am being counted very low And therefore he gave me another son and named him Samion Leah was a tender-eyed But in him was Samion formed We might be weak in our flesh There might be many failures in our spiritual life too In the worldly life we might not have certain talents All the others might not honor us She said that I was hated And has not heard me but God has heard me Jacob did not bother about her at all But God looked her state and the Lord was merciful on her We too might have failures in an external way But internally we should develop our divinity Many blind people have been great spiritual scholars Many sick people have become great scientists We can see in the world that people who are nothing Have done great things in the world When Goy did not have his right hand But they joined him into wrestling And they did not count him mean because he had no hand His father went and said my son has lost one of his hands But you must somehow teach him this art This boy also with much interest went and want to learn that wrestling like the others In the midst of all of the boys he had not had one hand And that was most important for wrestling But the father liked it And this boy said And the master said that he would somehow train him As to the others this boy also was trained To a certain limit he was trained well But only one hand When a certain time came It was a time that each of them should wrestle with the others Finally this boy was landed after a situation where he asked to wrestle with the other Although he had two hands failed with him But he who had one hand was wrestling with the champion But the master had a great hope on him Therefore the opponent had counted him mean because he had only one hand And the competition began And he with one hand was tackling The master had already given him a special training for this He did not give any other boy this training He alone was given the training because he was with one hand And whoever comes he will handle him Before when as he was coming towards the hand he was tackling him At one time the champion also came into his hands The next second he caught him with his hand and threw him off And I read that he had won it And that master had a hope Somehow he has to overcome But he was lame in his body but he made him a victor Like this, people are seeing externally And with the nauses and inferiority complex within us we have many failures But in the midst of this saying that the Lord Lord is seeing us that we are counted mean And God wants to do great works through us That is the different expectation from God We are his horses Therefore we will be ready for it and the Lord will give us victory The horse is prepared for the battle but safety is of the Lord Why was he named Samion? Because God said And she said And she said See what the Lord has given to you What all the Lord has given to us He has given us life, strength and health He has given us wisdom He has given us knowledge Much more than the others he has kept us He has given us money He has given us things He has given us houses He has given us families He has given us generations He has given us all facilities You have to keep one higher than you But keeping one higher than you You should not see that you are not like him But see the ones who are lower than you And thank God for the greatness that he has given to you The gifts of the Holy Spirit is given to each one of them according to his needs If you are called as a slave be a slave If you are called to be free be free What has the Lord given to you? I asked them God said Samion When I read this she said the Lord has given me a name in Samion You can have a list After you have come to this religion what all the Lord has given to you? You can just have the list Every day we are asking of the Lord As the horse leeches asking give and give And Samion means one who is asking of the Lord She asked and the Lord gave him What goodness did not the Lord to feel? He has given everything More than the others More than your brethren and your brothers and sisters The Lord was grieved saying that you are counted mean And wanted your head to be lifted up Secondly He was dwelling in Jerusalem Simon whose name was he was dwelling in Jerusalem A man of God should be in Jerusalem In any situation we should not go out of Jerusalem Jerusalem is the church which has been formed Next meaning is peace Third meaning is it's a city Fourthly it shows a fellowship All the tribes are found in different places They should gather in a place called Jerusalem Some says that Jerusalem is a city which is fitly framed Some says that Jerusalem is a city which is fitly framed Psalm 122 verse 3 we see Jerusalem is a builded as a city that is compact together It is compact together It is a place which is broken and which is fitly framed If we are just kept like that we cannot be united This repentance This verses The paths that the Lord is leading us is only making us fitly framed We should live in just Jerusalem Many of them are not found in Jerusalem What will happen if you go out of Jerusalem? What will happen when one goes out of Jerusalem? Luke's Gospel chapter 10 verse 30 when we see Then a man went on from Jerusalem to Cheroco When he went like this he fell among thieves And they let him half dead What was the gain that he got when he left Jerusalem? Half the life is gone When you go out of the church When you go out of the fellowship When you go out of peace When you go out of fitly framed situation Half life is gone After that he neither did go to Jerusalem nor to Cheroco Where was the place he went to? He was put up into an inn See where was his beginning, his end and where is the place he is now? Living with in Jerusalem is living with God because it's the city of the great king We should live with God Today when we say some of them not to go out of Jerusalem they go That man went and then fell among thieves If you just go a little away from the church you will be caught off by the thieves The thief is coming to steal and to destroy and he is coming for nothing else We can see of a man called Shimei He was belonging to the family of Saul When David was fearing Absalom and was going to the wilderness He was teasing all the way Teasing means he did not just tease him As we get angry we put on mud, he is putting on stones He is saying thou son of Belial you get lost and as women he was cursing him all the way If you should do like this to our people it's wrong If you go silently the Lord will work for you When this Shimei was cursing him all the way throwing stones And asking him to get lost the people with David were angry They asked him if they can cut him off David said The Lord has prepared this man that he might curse me If the Lord had admitted him you leave him like that Now he thought that David will get lost but he came again new When he came back he was the first person Because he was a Pentecostal man he went and asked for forgiveness He was a king and he said Oh king you just forgive me for what I had done Because he was newly appointed as king he said it's alright for him But cursing is a great fault And for that we will get the judgment one day or the other Because we are not getting angry like this And we are forgiven us According to our cursing we will receive the judgment somewhere or the other In Romans 1:2 Psalm 36 Solomon is calling and asking Shimei not to leave Jerusalem and any cause You should build a house in Jerusalem and be there If you want to be alive If you desire to not die Where should you be found? You be here itself Don't go anywhere else You build the house in Jerusalem and dwell there and go not for the sins anywhere with either And what was the word he said for that? Verse 38 That's a good word And I will never go out of this place, I will be here And he had no problem But what happened was But he said one word that on the day that thou goest out and pass over the brook Kidron thou shall die From that day Shimei built a house in Jerusalem and dwell there For many days Shimei dwelt in Jerusalem In verse 39 after three years And one of his servants ran away from that place Two of his servants who was working with him went away with another person And with that blame of cursing them he crossed Kidron He thought that three years has gone by and the king would have forgotten of his promise And when he went out the king killed him From the day we leave Jerusalem from that day onwards in our spiritual life there comes many failures In any situation don't come out to Jerusalem If you are somewhere outside go into Jerusalem If you are caught somewhere else by any cause by this message you go back to Jerusalem Ezra chapter 7 verse 9 On the first day of the first month he began to go And on the first day of the fourth month he came and joined Jerusalem It took four months for him to come from Babylon to Jerusalem For you to come from outside to this church how many years since you are born? After how many years are you coming to Jerusalem? But he was outside but graciously they brought him to Jerusalem After coming to Jerusalem we should not go out of Jerusalem Next he was full of justice He was just and devout What is meaning of justice to a person? Firstly we should be justful Justice shows firstly it shows that there are baptisms Matthew 3:15 it is said suffer it be so now for thus it becomes to fulfill all practices A child of God in order to fulfill the righteousness of God he should take the right baptism If you had taken it's not wrong leaving that you should take ahead a step to the right baptism You might say that it's only told about one baptism And I had taken infant baptism or sprinkling baptism or the baptism in the name of Jesus alone You might say like this You might have a thought in your mind That because it said of one baptism I had taken already how is it for the second? But as 19:4 we can see that they have taken again the baptism When it is wrong or when it is contrary to the word of God it's not wrong for you to come on the right path This righteousness shows the saving of the Holy Spirit Or we receiving the power of the Holy Ghost or the righteousness of God or not What we all know about this? According to Romans 14:17 The kingdom of God is not meat and drink but righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Ghost For the kingdom of God is full of righteousness The righteousness of God should also receive the right baptism of Holy Ghost And to her was given to be arrayed in clean garments The chaklean and white and fine linen And the fine linen is righteousness of saints Therefore there is a righteousness of saints Man of this world has righteousness And this is righteousness for the Old Testament What is the righteousness of the Old Testament? Eye for eye Tooth for tooth What is the New Testament? If one should slap on one side of the face show the other cheek too Therefore what is the righteousness of saints? In 1 Corinthians 6 In the world of the people The faith of the faithful The faith of the unfaithful If you read the book In 1 Corinthians 6 verse 8 onwards you can see About fighting and striving like the worldly people Finally what is the righteousness? In verse 7 You being at fault is you are fighting with one another Rather than doing like this why do you not rather take wrong? Why do you not rather suffer yourself to be defrauded? And enduring the wrong and enduring to be defrauded are the righteousness of saints When you have problems you should not go to be a fault to fight with the others Many of them are speaking that servants of God do not know what are family problems are It's only if they have the family they will know about the problems You are entangled in one family and blinking but we are caught with 400, 500 families We are having only one or two children and you are wanting looking as to how they can grow them up We have 50 to 60 children You have only one problem, one wife and one children and facing one sign of problems But if there are people of different families facing problems on all signs When the earth shall be charged are you going to be away from this to be charged? It's so what is it that you are not able to fulfill of the way that is for your life? Firstly righteousness means the right anointing within us Is making us to endure the wrong and the defrauding towards us 2 Corinthians 6:7 The armor of righteousness on the right hand and on the left We should not have unrighteousness as armor Next Melchizedek is the king of righteousness That is what is told about him in Hebrews 7:2 It shows the New Testament ministry Living according to the righteousness of the New Testament is the righteousness life First his name is Samion Secondly he lived in Jerusalem Thirdly he was charged
Is it kneeling like the others and saying hallelujah? If you remove your ornaments, is it godliness? These are all different aspects of the godliness. These are only a share of the godliness. But what is true godliness? James one twenty-seven. That is only true godliness.
If you should go and inquire the fatherless and widows.
But what is true godliness? James one twenty-seven. That is only true godliness. It is told about a pure religion and undefined. See how clearly it is spoken. They should go and inquire the fatherless and widows. They should go and inquire about the sufferings of the widows. This is an external life. Going and inquiring the fatherless and the poor and the widows is the most important. Some of them are not inquiring about the others at all because lest they should ask for money. To keep himself unspotted from the world is pure and undefined religion. But from the fashions of the world, from the attacks of the world, from all things of this world, we should be preserved. Jesus Christ said, I am not of the world. So, I am not of the world. Love not the world and the things of the world. That which is of the world is not of God. The world and its lusts will perish. And the fashion of this world will pass away. So, even if we are in the world, the character of this world, we should not commandify us. They have one of the preachings of our churches, you should hate the fashions of the world. Saint Paul speaks about this, saying that we have every authority to enjoy the world, but it will not be worthy to us. Therefore, we are hating the world and say it is not needed for us. He had no form, no commonliness, nor neither did he have any beauty to look upon. Favors deceitful and beauty is vain. We should not be caught by any attacks of this world. Therefore, we are not indulging ourselves in the first of this world. We do not do anything to time pass. We do not go out on toes. We do not admit any entertainments. We do not put on any fashions of this world. By the love of Christ, we say we are putting away aside everything and say we do not want. When we die, none of these will come along with us. We have not brought anything into this world, neither are we going to take any. One man confesses that I came out naked and I go back naked. Therefore, for that which is beautiful in this world, there is no need of a loan. Our doctrine is telling that you being entangled with the first of this world, you should not go into the fashions and get caught in it. If you are saying it is godly, what does it mean? You should inquire the fatherless children. You should inquire the widows. You should inquire the affected ones. He might have everything, he has authority to enjoy everything in the world, but he will keep himself. You read about Elijah in the Old Testament. You read about John the Baptist in the New Testament. Because here, no, the God did he put on camel's hair. Elijah was a great prophet prophesying to the kings. But how was his garment? His garment was camel's hair. John the Baptist was the only son. But he did not abide with his parents, he went to the wilderness and was waiting for what God had said. What was his garment? His garment was also camel's hair. He did not, his parents earned for him and keep, but he took, he ate only honey and grass of earth. We do have all authority to go and eat and enjoy the words, but it is not worthy to us. Some of them will speak continuously, but will say that they are devout. When one is not riddling his tongue and is counting himself that he is devout, then all his divinity or religion is vain. What does it mean? He is devout, will talk limitly. That is a sign of devoutness. If any is full of religion, he will speak only one or two words. Let your words be few in the presence of God. For by the abundance of words, there will not be sound. When conversations will spoil bad manners. For every vain word that man speaks, he should give a count to God. He was a man full of devoutness. And the next hand. If you are devout, then the Lord will harken to your prayer. One blind man just get this preaching.
In the book of Hebrews, a new school was opened.
John nine. John nine thirty-one. He who was a blind person who did not read the word of God at all, had never seen the Bible, says that to the one who is a worshipper of God, the Lord will hear him. Why will this devoutness lead him to? It will lead him to a satisfied mind. And to the one who is devout, he will not go asking for anything else except for his eating and drinking in the place to stay, because he will stay with a satisfied mind. First Timothy six, six, you can see that a mind which is having sufficient mind is enough for the godly person. If we have the godliness, then we should have a contentment which is sufficient. Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord. But before godliness, there are some problems. When one is saved, they are having some problems in the families. They are coming newly to our fellowship, they have problems. When they see problems, you should backslide. Second Timothy three twelve. And during Christ's history, the Lord is the one who is faithful to God. All that will live godly in Christ, this is as far as persecution. Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord. This man full of just and devout, he was waiting for the comfort of Israel. The consolation of Israel shows the anointing. When Jesus Christ came, he got this consolation. When a man comes in his Christian life to Jesus, he receives consolation. You come to me and I will give you rest. One man goes to Jesus to receive rest. When he takes his yoke upon him, he receives rest to his soul. When he receives the Holy Spirit, then there is rest to his soul. When he comes into the church, rest in everything. You stand in the ways and ask as to which path is right and go in the right way, you will receive rest to your souls. Waiting for the consolation means on the next hand, for the one who is believing, he is giving this consolation. Hebrews, chapter four, verse three. What is told there? And we, which have believed, enter into the trust. These days, getting filled in the spirit, you should not go on like that itself, but as we get filled in the spirit, we will receive rest within ourselves. Problems in our houses. Problems in our body. Problems in the business. And like this problems on all angles. And the peace will fail. And many things will come contradicting us. In the midst of these thorns, we are found as the lilies. In the midst of this, where will a consolation come from? It is by the Holy Spirit. When we get filled in the Holy Spirit alone, we can receive this consolation. And that's why the churches have increased. Acts nine thirty-one. And the churches were rested throughout all the places and were edified and walking in the fear of the Lord and comfort of the Holy Ghost. It is in the Holy Ghost that is rest. None else can come and console us. Because we are coming in the presence of God as the broken spirit. When we give room for the Holy Spirit, it is satisfying us on all angles and this is giving us rest and peace. Six three. And the Holy Ghost was upon him. Wherever you go, the fullness of the Holy Ghost should be upon you. This is the experience of Jesus. This was the experience of Mary. Upon them was the Holy Ghost. Reading in Isaiah sixty-one one. This is the practical word which is said about Jesus. Why is the spirit of the Lord upon him? That he might preach the good tidings to the meek. If you are a child of God, you should not go anywhere. Those who are anointed should not think that you can speak in unknown tongues and go to heaven like this. When the Holy Spirit comes upon you, you should preach the good tidings to the meek. I was in a small church. That was the first in church. There are totally people, twenty-two of them will come to church. It was a small shed. In front of that shed, a small room of cardboard was put up for me. Behind that shed was for the sisters. There was no bathroom, no water. There was no fence. No facility, mark. No vehicle. And around twenty-five will come. Now, in the whole of the month, we will get one three hundred or four hundred rupees. But that we should run the faith home, give food to all the people and to the faith home, and we should give the tithes and offerings and so on. But the Lord gave me a family. One husband and wife. One son and one daughter. Both of them were teachers. They got for me. Firstly, they were going without clutching into my hands. I asked them to come to one Bible study. They were a member of our church itself in another big church. That branch which they were in was a big branch. And the branch where I was was a small branch. Therefore, they hesitated to come there. I just asked them to come for one Bible study. And with one Bible study, caught hold of them. With that, they joined me. But they had a good spirit of preaching. The spirit of gospel. And when that spirit comes after the school is over, after four, they will go and preach the gospel to the villages near by till seven. These two children coming from school, they will write their home books and will be sitting like that itself. After seven thirty, they will come back home, cook food and look after them, and again in the morning, they will get up and go to school. But both of them had. The spirit of the Lord is upon me not to preach the good tidings to the meek. Today, there are two hundred, three hundred people coming to the church. And they were the basic for it. After some days, the boy came for the ministry. Nextly, the daughter came. Nextly, both of them together came to ministry. See what will be. And to the one who is evangelizing, the spirit of evangelizing brought them even unto Zion. If the spirit of God is upon you, you cannot be silent, but the spirit should urge you to preach the gospel. If the Lord asks you to speak, speak. If he asks you to tell the word of God, say. If you are asked to give the notice, give to him. If the Lord asks you to speak, you speak about Jesus. In one minute, that soul himself will be turned. Some of them in the time of accidents. In the time of accident. There was a terrible accident. That bus was rolling over. At the time of that bus being toppled down, one man shouted out, Jesus. Because he was a believer. When the people were careless, this bus was stopping. The shout that he shouted, the bus, whole of the bus had. Bus which turned over three, four.
Bus which turned over three-fourth, just stood up like that. In that last moment that he shouted that bus will turn over, they stood like that. All of them said that he shouted like that and that God heard that voice. This is a one-minute process. In one minute, when you utter a word, that has a great effect. When the Lord asks you to say that word to one person. According to your knowledge, according to what you have heard, you feed that gospel into them. When the Lord will ask account for it, it will be in your account. Leaving that you should not be silent. Then the Lord will see that there is no use of giving. When we think that if there is a big stage and we are all allowed to give the testimony. That's the time. Even if time does not comes for you, then you should speak in the midst of situations. Whichever time you get, you should tell the gospel. This is the sign of the spirit of God being upon us. Secondly, when the spirit of God comes upon us, then the Christ will be found in us. Luke one thirty-five. The angel of God is saying to Mary that the Holy Spirit. The spirit of the high will come upon you. Then the Holy Seed will be cast from you. Preaching the gospel is not only sufficient, the Christ also should be formed in us and the Christ should be perfected in us. There is another word. You should not see death before you have seen the Lord's Christ. Is there a promise given to you that until the coming of the Lord, you will be alive? Have you any revelation concerning your death? The righteous is having surety about his death and has hope in it. It's so heavy hope in our death. That we will die today. At this time, my race will get over. The Lord has promised me. Do you have any revelation concerning your death? Many of them in the word of God have this experience and are saints too. There are saints who have accomplished their race saying, the Lord has admitted me only to go on to journey here and they have completed their race too. And rightly to say, for a spiritual man of God, this death of this world is not an end, but he is an inheritor of. We have no death at all. If you are going to die in this world, the word of God calls it a sleep. The word of God says, blessed are the ones who die in Christ and secondly, it says that they are only in sleep. Be who are alive shall not go ahead or go before those who are dead. In another angle, if you are not going to see death, means what's meaning? This shows failures. Or it shows fall. On the day that usually of this fruit, he should surely die. It's not little death, but facing the failures, mankind faced a little spiritual death. We should have a clarity concerning our death because it is said that you shall not see death until you see Jesus. For that he will come to church every day. Whom to see? In order to see Jesus. His hands and feet are becoming weak. And his age too. And weakness and sickness are common. But one word came to him that he should not see death and to see Jesus. We should have a clear surety about. So many of them in their exact time, they say that they will go at this time. We should have a clarity concerning our death. We should have no failures. Until death, we should have no failures. Even until the coming of Jesus, until we see Jesus Christ, we should not have any little failures. Nextly, he is having the moving of the spirit. He has the spirit, moving of the spirit in him always. With that moving of the spirit, he came into the temple that day. If we are becoming old, we need them, leading of the spirit. After becoming old, you should go on until you reach the best mark. Because we do not move in our race. We should have the inspiration of the spirit within us. Whether we eat. Or sleep. Or be at home. Or in the presence of God. On the journey. Up with the children. We should have the leading of the spirit always within us. Isaiah forty-five one. The spirit of God was upon Zion and it was moving. When we read in Ezra one-one. The spirit of God moved him. He was a king. He was a gentle king. And the spirit of God moved him. Therefore, he sent the people from Babylon from his kingdom. And he set free all the captives. And his spirits urging was. The spirit of God came into him and was urging him to send the people and give the money to build the temple and send all the people to build the temple. Have you got such urging? Have you got the urging of the spirit? The spirit causing you to go and see others' falls is the urging of Satan. You go there, you will see the glory of God. You stand in the cleft of the rock and you shall see my glory. We need a right urging of the spirit. David had the times when he went moves by the spirit of God, but finally, he had the moving of the Satan too. And happening to that, moving of that spirit, he yielded himself and sang to those who were killed. Samson had the urging of the spirit. But he lost the urging of that spirit and he became blind. And his life ended up in tears. Extremely, it was a victory. It was that day that he killed many people even more than he killed. But personally, his life isn't good. Those of them who are under the urging of the spirit should not say that when tears and in pains and in sorrows and end up their life in tears. Looking unto the one who is right. His life is in the peace. We should look, have a right urging of the spirit. We don't have that practice. Even if you are small aged, if you have the right leading of the spirit. Even for small aspects of your life, you can see the urging of the spirit. The word he is saying was. Look two thirty-two. My eyes have seen their salvation. When he says that you shall see Jesus, he says that my eyes have seen the salvation. If you shall believe, you shall see the glory of God. You believe on the Lord brightly. I should see God. Seeing God is on two aspects. Seeing Jesus is on two aspects. One is seeing Jesus in the secret coming and secondly, being forsaken and being beaten and meeting him. If you are not able to see Jesus in the secret coming. Being forsaken, every eye shall see whom they have pierced. What is this if you see him then? My eyes have seen the salvation. As I have thirty-three seventeen, we can see that I should see the king in his beauty and I shall see the land that is far off. Firstly, his name was Simeon. He was in Jerusalem. He was full of justice. He was devout. He was waiting for the consolation of Israel. And Holy Ghost was upon him. He got the promise that he should not see death before he had seen Christ. He was moved by the spirit. And he spoke clearly saying that my eyes have seen the salvation. And tenthly. Look two twenty-nine. Lord, now let us sow this own department peace according to thy word. Because he has no more desire to live in the world because what I have to see, I have seen. What are people saying? I thought I should get my children, but I got them, but now it's ready for me to die. I divided my property, now if I should close my eyes, I will go to heaven, he will say, he will not go. Who will go? And I have fought a good fight of faith, I have kept my faith and I finished my course. Only such person can go in peace. Our race should end in peace. At the time of death, if you should scream out and say that Satan is coming and something else is coming, then you are ending in. I am seeing the angels. I am seeing the glorious city. I am seeing my redeemed. I am going in peace. My race is over. I have seen my house. This is how we should finish our race. He is saying that my eyes have seen salvation and whom I wanted to see, I have seen, now I am going in peace. Now he has a great hope in his death. See what a great desire he has. Job says that my redeemed will. And I will see him. That is the sign of finishing our race in peace. But Baal am said. Let my end be as the end of righteousness and let my end be like him. That's how he prayed. I should die as the righteous. My end should be like his. That's a good desire. But all what he had done is wrong. What is his end? They killed him. And he did not lie as righteous. He started his life as a prophet but ended as a sorcerer. We too have a desire that I and my children should finish our race victoriously and go up in this coming, but if you live a life accordingly, you can go in this coming. And for our salvation. That my seed is coming to this religion. And even if he called me now, I am ready to go. My children are all anointed. That is how in peace we should end our race. We look at the life of the missionaries. You just read and see. Have you read about Robert Caldwell? He came to Aden Gudi. He came to this Aden Gudi with his name. When the spirit was moving him to as a missionary to come to India, the mother was about to die. He left out as a young person to come out to India, that time his mother was so sick that she was not even able to get up. The mother who was not able to even get up, he went and hugged her on her bed and she said, "I am not able to look after you, but I have to yield to the word of God, I have to go." It was at that time that mother in tears sent his son that he is going for the service of the Lord. And it was his whole purpose like that. If it is our people, they will say, "You go after ten days, you close my eyes and go." They left their children like that. When I read all this, it was surprising to me. They gave their children as an offering to the Lord. Then the spirit within the mother is only being the spirit of missionary within him. If our children are going to ministry, then we will ask them, has anybody told them, often don't go to the church, when you go often, I know something is going to happen. When you end. When you are closing your eyes, he will be leaving somewhere else and you will die out here saying that my child and my child. But the child whom you are closing, hinting from going to the ministry is he closing eyes? It's not so. We should live in a divine manner and end up in a divine way. Now he is saying, my eyes have seen their salvation, now let us sow this own department peace according to thy word. Our race also should end in peace. Do you change me like Simeon? And they are all examples to us before us. These are the words written for our example. They have lived. See what are like they have looked those days. We let's ask God to give us the grace that he might, we might live such a life these days. Now let the grace be poured upon us. Hallelujah, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. We should have a clear surety about. So many of them in their exact time, they say that they will go at this time. We should have a clarity concerning our death. We should have no failures. Until death, we should have no failures. Even until the coming of Jesus, until we see Jesus Christ, we should not have any little failures. Nextly, he is having the moving of the spirit. He has the spirit, moving of the spirit in him always. With that moving of the spirit, he came into the temple that day. If we are becoming old, we need them, leading of the spirit. After becoming old, you should go on until you reach the best mark. Because we do not move in our race. We should have the inspiration of the spirit within us. Whether we eat. Or sleep. Or be at home. Or in the presence of God. Or on the journey. With the children. We should have the leading of the spirit always within us. The spirit of God was upon Zion and it was moving. When we read in Ezra one-one. The spirit of God moved him. He was a king. He was a gentle king. And the spirit of God moved him. Therefore, he sent the people from Babylon from his kingdom. And he set free all the captives. And his spirits urging was. The spirit of God came into him and was urging him to send the people and give the money to build the temple and send all the people to build the temple. Have you got such urging? Have you got the urging of the spirit? The spirit causing you to go and see others' falls is the urging of Satan. You go there, you will see the glory of God. You stand in the cleft of the rock and you shall see my glory. We need a right urging of the spirit. David had the times then when he went moves by the spirit of God, but finally, he had the moving of the Satan too. And happening to that, moving of that spirit, he yielded himself and sang to those who were killed. Samson had the urging of the spirit. But he lost the urging of that spirit and he became blind.